Hi, and welcome to our first show for the 2013 calendar school year. Our board wrap-up show with Superintendent Dr. David Pennington. We're going to talk a bit about the August board meeting, but really, this show will be about you, our great constituents of our school district. And the school season, school year has started, Dr. Pennington. A week in, everything's pretty good right now, so I guess it's a good start to the school year.
It really was a good start. We didn't, you know, when you start a school year, there are some things that just always happen. Usually, you have a young child who either gets on the wrong bus, or they don't get off where they're supposed to get off, they don't get off at the right stop, and when you get back to the bus barn, you've got, you know, one child left over, and those kinds of things. And we didn't have anything that happened this year. We were very fortunate that kids got on the buses they're supposed to get onto, they got home. Obviously, as the year goes along, we'll still have some of that kind of stuff happen. But so for a first day, that went really smooth. The high school is, has always got challenges with 1,400 students, and, you know, freshmen figuring out where they're going to class, and then upperclassmen who maybe they, you know, they enrolled, and maybe they wanted an elective, but that elective was full, so they had to get into another elective, and, you know, they want to change schedules. And so, and then we have issues with sometimes kids, the computer puts kids into English classes for some reason. And it just takes a while to work all that stuff out, and usually, the first week does that, and I think that we've pretty much have got those things ironed out, and so as we hit this week, we should be, we should be good to go.
I was reading about a school district in Tulsa that had such a problem with bus schedules and kids, that they were delayed an hour getting those kids home the first day of school. And it's interesting, the process that you go through, the bus drivers, the way the kids are told what bus to get on. There's a, there's a formula to all this, and obviously, ours is working pretty well.
It does work well. You know, sometimes if you were to, if you were to stand outside of West Middle School, you might think it's just organized chaos, because, you know, West is a good example, because we have buses that start at West, they load students, then they leave, then we have buses that come in that drop students off, and those students get on another bus to go to some other, either to maybe take a rural route, or to some other part of the community. And we have that going on all across the district. It really is, if anybody's ever been in a, in a large city, and has ridden bus transportation, how you'll, you get on a bus stop, maybe you ride to another bus stop, you get off of that bus stop, you get on another bus, and that takes you where you ultimately want to go. In a lot of ways, this is a very minimum, a, a, a small version of that, so.
As we start school, one of the things that obviously people are going to talk about is school safety, and I know that last year, not locally, but nationally, we had so much tragedy and drama. As our superintendent, how do you feel about our school safety, and has there been any changes made from last year to this year concerning building security?
Probably the biggest change is that, as we look at our sites, some of our visitors to East and West know that last year, they had a, a, a machine that we call a lobby guard, that is, a, that when a visitor comes to the building, they scan the driver's license, and we get a quick background check on that individual before we let them into the building. We, as we are getting ready to put new entrances on our, on our sites, which is something we did with the bond issue we just passed, when those new entrances are put on at Woodlands and Trout and Liberty and Union, they will have a, a system in place that when a visitor comes into the building, they can't get into the rest of the building until they've, you know, they've, they've checked into the office and done the lobby guard check. We were actually able to go in and do some modifications to Garfield, and do that right now. So if you go to Garfield after school hours have started, you'll actually, you actually have a system that automatically locks the inside doors, you can't come into the building unless you're buzzed in. Now, you know, it's still glass, and we know from the incident at Sandy Hook, that if somebody's got a assault weapon with them, or if they're committed, they can break through that glass, and we're, and we're looking at what options we have to, to make that more secure, and it'll take us time to figure out what the right thing to do is. From a, you know, but the, but again, in most instances, you know, 99% of the time, the best weapon we have in keeping our schools safe is students expressing their concerns to staff. If they, if they, if a student tells somebody that they've got a gun in their backpack, that they've brought a knife to school, that they're upset, that they're thinking about committing suicide, that, you know, if they'll just report that to a responsible adult, whether that's a teacher, or administrator, a parent, a neighbor, a grandparent, then we can, we can look into that. And in most cases, if you have a young person that, you know, that is having, fighting depression, or has some other mental issue they're dealing with, then we can intervene, and we can get that student help before they act out violently. And, and so that's just of critical importance. And so, what I would say to our viewers is that if they have school-aged children, to make sure that you sit down and you talk, we're telling them that at school, they need to hear that from you at home, that if you've got any concerns, you know, if you hear anything, if you see anything, please tell somebody. And again, that's hard for kids to do. You know, they don't want to be a tattletale. And, and, but it's just critically. I mean, there, if you go back and look at, at, most of the incidents where a student has brought a gun to school, and they've harmed somebody, there were others, there were students who afterwards came and said, "Well, he told me he was going to do that," or, you know, "They told me a day before, or a week before," or "I saw something they'd posted on Facebook," or in an email. And obviously, everybody feels guilty about that, afterwards, because they didn't say anything. So they have to say something. And, and look, most, most, and I think that you've got, you know, as adults, we say, "Well, gee, why don't they say anything?" Well, because they don't think their kids, they don't think their friends are going to do anything. They just think they're blowing off steam, or whatever, they're just talking big. But, so we have to, we have to report those kind of things, and if we'll do that, we'll be fine. The other thing we're doing is that we've, we've commissioned, we've actually, we're going to enter into an agreement with an engineer here in the very near future, that's going to come and is going to inspect all of our storm shelter areas. We have, you know, if somebody were to ask us, "Do we have a safe place for all of our students to go that's below ground at all of our sites?" Our answer would be, "Yes, either it's below ground, or it's a FEMA, it's a shelter that meets the standards, the FEMA standards." For example, if you look at this, at the shelter we have at Lincoln, that we, when we built Lincoln School in, in the late 90s, that safe room that we have at Lincoln actually exceeds the standards that FEMA has in place today. The, the safe room at Garfield and the safe room at Union were built to FEMA standards. But our older buildings have areas that are, that are, that are below ground. We have a basement under the auditorium at West. We have a basement in the high school, and at one time was a game room. Those people that went to, went to Poe High in the 50s, 60s, 70s know that as a student lounge area, for students that went there most recently, that's where the drivers' ed classroom meets. At, at East, we have the tunnel that runs underneath Grand Avenue. At our other elementary sites, we have cafeterias that are below grade. Our assumption is that those areas are safe. But, in light of what happened in, in, in Moore, we're going to, we're going to have those checked. We're going to have an engineer come in and look at those, and tell us, "These are safe, maybe they're not safe, maybe, maybe you need to make this modification or that modification." And, and so we'll, so we will know, and we'll know if they're not, if they're not, obviously, being underground, being below grade level, is a lot safer than being above ground. So, you know, we believe that in 98% of the, of the storms that may happen in Ponca City, those are safe locations to be. But I think that, you know, that what's happened in Moore, the standard's a little bit higher. You know, can we withstand NF5? I think it's interesting, I, I, obviously, I'm not a Ponca City native, I've not lived here my whole life. But I was having a discussion with a gentleman about this a week or so ago, and he pointed out to me that there's never been a tornado in Ponca City. And I was really kind of surprised to know that. I mean, I, my first job in K County was in Blackwell, as superintendent over there, and they had a tornado, I believe, in either 55 or 58, that destroyed a significant portion of that community. And so it was, it just kind of surprised me that, 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 that with all the tornatic activity that happens in this part of the state, and, and especially in southern Kansas, that kind of where we sat, I think it's pretty, it's just really surprised me, that in, at least as long as we've been keeping track of tornadoes in this state, that, that we've not had one. And, but again, you know, it doesn't mean we shouldn't be prepared, and again, we believe we are, but we just thought it was, it made sense to go ahead and check that out. And hopefully, we'll know something in the, by, by the first of the year, what the engineer's report will be.
Well, it's like insurance. You hope you never need it, but it's there if you do, and that's, that's a good thing. For baby boomers out there that may not be familiar with everything that is happening with our schools, the August board meeting dealt with a very interesting thing, I think it's wonderful. The kids get computers now, laptops, from the schools, and I know that that was part of the discussion, the cost, who's going to provide those. That was one of the parts of the board meeting that I thought you might want to discuss with those people.
Well, we are, we are in the process. We've actually, by today, we should have laptops checked out to every student, grades eight through 12. Now, I know that, that, because, I mean, it's, I know, you know, kids are kids, and I've had some reports that some students are coming home and telling their mom, "I don't know why we have this, we're not going to use it in this class," or in any classes or, especially at the high school, we're getting some feedback on that. Our kids are going to use their laptops. They may not use them as much at the beginning of the year as they will at the end of the year. This is new for about half of our faculty, and so they have to adapt their teaching style, their curriculum, to that tool being in the hands of students. You know, if you go back and you see what we're doing at, at East, and you look at what we're doing at this junior, at the sophomore and freshman level, look at some of our math classes and science classes, you know, as teachers have, as students have that tool in their possession, as teachers get used to have students having that tool in their possession, it will change the way they teach. And it may take us a while to get there. We have some textbooks that are not on the laptops. We have a Spanish book, and the reason for that is, we're going to adopt new Spanish books next year, and the, and the company that we bought those Spanish books from wanted $5,000 to, for us, to give us a disc that had the Spanish book on it. Most of the textbook companies, when we've gone to this one-to-one initiative, have just given us the rights to go download textbooks on the internet. So, we've got some textbook companies that are a little slow in coming around to this new technology, so we've got to work with that. We've had some discussions with our English teachers. We have lots of, of novels, you know, paperback books that kids have used, and, and, you know, we've discussed with them, they need to get with the publishers, they need to get online versions for our students, so they don't have to carry books around. You know, I'm a book guy. I, I, I have an iPad, I read books on my iPad, I'd rather have a book in my hand. And, but, that's the wave of the future. I, I kind of feel sorry for people who are in the bookstore business. You know, I don't know where that business is 100 years from now, but, but I saw something the other day that said that vinyl records are back. That, that they've actually started to open stores where people go get vinyl records. So, so if vinyl records can survive the digital age, then hopefully, good old-fashioned books can survive the digital age also.
I'm in good shape on the vinyl records, but you mentioned the books. I've read, school districts have totally done away with books. There are some that have already done that, and, you know, I don't know whether it'll happen in our lifetime, but do you see that one day maybe being where schools are?
Yeah, I think so. And we're pretty close to that. I mean, we really are very, very close to not having textbooks with kids eight through 12. You know, I don't know that you get there at the elementary level. I just, there, so many of those books are small books, and, and I just don't know the economy. But, you know, we've, we've got agreements, we, there are people we, that we have, that we do business with, that they have libraries online of, of reading material for students, that, because they can go home and they can read a book on their, on their computer. Obviously, the, as, as smartphones get smarter, they get cheaper, they get, they get in the hands of more and more people, and trying to figure out what that right size is, I think, for somebody to hold and read, I think that's the, you know, that's going to be the next issue. You know, I was on a, on a flight this summer, and the, usually when I, I like to, I go to an airport, and I'll buy a book at the airport to read on the flight coming home. And, and they didn't have anything I wanted. You know, there wasn't, there wasn't anything in the bookstore that I wanted. And so at the last minute, I pulled out my iPhone, I went to iBooks, and I downloaded a book. I didn't have my iPad with me. And so on the flight home, I read a book on my iPhone. You know, and once you get started reading, if the book's any good, you kind of forget the medium that it's coming in. So, you know, so I don't know. You know, maybe that's, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's the future. But I think for most elementary students, need a bigger screen. But I mean, you talk about the, the power of that. You know, one of the biggest issues we have, if you look at, if you look at young people, children that come to us, you know, you hear people talk about a learning gap, an achievement gap. That gap starts very early in life, and it has to do with the, the language that students come to us with. How many words do they know? What is their vocabulary? There are some students that come to us with a big deficit in language. And if you go back and you, and you dig deeper, what's the reason for that deficit? Well, one of the biggest reasons for that deficit is, is their parents have never read to them. They don't sit down and read a book with them every night when they're two years old. They don't take them to the library to check out books. They don't get books as presents, so they don't have books in their lives. Well, and some of that, and there's lots of reasons for that. Mom, dad are working two jobs, or spending a lot of time with a babysitter. They, maybe mom and dad don't read very well. Maybe, maybe they're not a good reader, or they're not a reader at all. But you have the potential with technology to, to, to give that child access to a book that can read itself to them, so they can follow along in that book. And, and so it allows, I don't think that replaces having a parent read with you, because some of that's about spending time with your child, and there's value in that. But maybe it can provide some help. And so, and maybe that can help close that gap that students come to school with, so they're on, on more level footing, so that we don't have to spend so much of their time in school trying to close that gap that come with. So I think there's lots of power in technology. I don't think any of us know exactly, you know, where it's going to take us. Obviously, it, technology has always changed the world. You know, whether it was the, you know, the cotton gin, or the steam engine, the mechanical loom, those things have all changed. Technology has always changed life. And, and so this technology will continue to change our lives. We just are kind of along for the ride and see where it takes us.
September 3rd, the legislature will meet. Governor Fallon called a special session. I know they've got a lot of things to discuss, but to your knowledge, is any type of school funding, or anything about our school system's going to be involved in?
You know, I don't think it will be. I think it'll be just what they've said so far, which I think is to do some stuff with tort reform. You know, I, obviously, I wish that the legislature would have allocated more money to our schools. And, you know, we're seeing that. If you have a, a child or a grandchild in our school system, their classes this year are bigger than they've ever been. Some of that is, is because we've, we've, we've got more students than we've had. Some of it is, it's, it's, it's getting harder to find teachers. But, but we have lots of issues. Class size is an issue. Teacher retention and recruitment is an issue. I don't know what the numbers are yet on the number of young people that graduated from Oklahoma colleges with degrees in education, but I, just be, just from listening to people across the state, and the number of school districts still have vacancies, we didn't graduate enough students to meet the vacancies we had because of retirement. And, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, that the, that people my age, and maybe a few years younger, that we're at that level now, where we could retire any day. And so as, and, and, you know, that's the baby boomer generation, that's the biggest part, that's the biggest demographic in the country. So as those jobs open, there's got to be a pipeline of people to come in and fill those jobs. And what we're experiencing is that pipeline is thinning out pretty quick. We have four jobs that we could not fill. We have three speech pathology positions. One of those, we've advertised now for two years, and we've not had an applicant. We had two individuals that, that left this district. One of those went to work for a private company, and I think the other one may have moved out of state. We did not have any applicants for those jobs. And so we've actually had to contract with a, with a company to provide us with a speech pathologist, which cost us more money to do that. But we had to find, we had to provide those services. And then we're actually doing, going to do some of our speech work with an online service. We've never tried that before, we don't know how it's going to work, but it seems to be prevalent across the country. You know, it's kind of hard for me to imagine that somebody can set, this particular company, this Oklahoma company, that they can set, and in a, in a, in a Skype situation, give speech, deliver speech services to a group of students. But, but we've looked at it, we've, we've, we've investigated it, and we think there's a niche that, that will work with some of our students. We would prefer to find a teacher, but we don't have one. And then the week before school started, our ED teacher at the high school left to follow, her husband got a job in South Carolina, and she moved to South Carolina. We have no applicants for that job. And so we've had to, you know, we're, we're trying to scratch around and fill in. We've got individuals in that classroom, but it's not the circumstance in which we want to do it with. We were concerned that our four-year-old enrollment was going to be high enough that we needed to hire another pre-K teacher. We were also concerned about some early childhood spots at some of our schools, that maybe, we may need to hire another teacher in a specific grade. For four weeks now, we've had an early childhood position posted, we've had an elementary education position posted, we have no applicants. And that's never happened before. We've always been able to hire early childhood and elementary teachers, either right up to the day school started, or after school started, and get what we consider to be high quality candidates. And, and, you know, so the question is, why is that happening? You know, I think there are lots of reasons for that. One reason is, is that, is that women, and traditionally, most teachers, when we think about teachers in life, most of us think about a female. Young women have more opportunities today than they've ever had. You know, there, I think I saw the other day where the majority of, of medical school students today are women. Well, I promise you, when I was in college in the 1970s, that was not true. Okay? There are more women in law school, there are more women in engineering, there are more women in business. Nursing has become a very, a, a high-demand position that gives great flexibility to, to women, and to men. You know, there seem more men in nursing. So I think that's part of it. But I think the other part of it is, is we've not done anything in this state and in this nation to make teaching an attractive job. We've, you know, all we've talked about for the last 20 years, 25 years, is how our schools are failing, and, and how we have to hold teachers more accountable for student progress, and how we're going to punish teachers if students don't achieve at certain levels. And it's just constant, on and on and on and on. And so you have to ask yourself, why would anybody choose that as a profession? You know, I'm not, I'm not going to be evaluated on how I do my job, I'm going to be evaluated on a, on a test score of, of a group of kids who, while I do have them in my classroom, we know that there are multiple factors that affect student learning. We know that, that home environment is a critical component of that. And, you know, as a, as a teacher, you know, when you look at it, how much of a child's day is spent with me? Now, they spend a lot of it with me, but when, they spend a whole lot more of it at home and in the community. And so, but I'm, but I'm solely accountable for their performance. And, and especially in schools with high numbers of students in poverty, where, where we know going in that you, that the cards are stacked against you as a teacher, if all we're going to do is look at, at how students score on, on a standardized test that's given once a year? So again, why, why would I, why would I do that? Why would I do that? Why would I do that? Why would I recommend that my son or my daughter go into public education? Now, I would do that. I have a daughter-in-law that's, that teaches at the elementary level in Arkansas, and I'm very proud of her, and, and it was thrilling, my son, when she, when they got engaged, and, and I, and I, you know, gives me somebody I can talk to about what goes on in schools. And, you know, I would encourage either one of my stepdaughters to be teachers. One of them's going to, one of them's a college professor. But, but that's, but again, that, that the idea of common end, of working with young people, committing my life, my time to doing that, we don't create an environment for that. And then the other part of it is, and I know this is the part people don't want to hear about, but it's pay. You know, we, we have not had a, what I would consider to be a significant pay raise in this state for teachers in about six years now. Yes, they've got a minimum increase, you know, they get a step increase every year. And they have gotten the benefit of insurance. But if you look at, if you compare teacher pay to any other part of the American workforce, and where they were in 2004, and where they are today, and teachers, educators have lost ground. And, and so again, you know, teacher, teaching pay has always been low pay. You know, when I, when I, when I, when I became a teacher, when I made that decision to do that, I remember, we, we talked about, "Well, you're not, you know, you're not going to make anything." But, you know, you did have, you felt like you had some control, there was job satisfaction, and there was intrinsic rewards in that. But those intrinsic, the, the accountability system has, has, has taken away those intrinsic rewards, because of the, of the constant barrage on, on teachers not doing their jobs. And you know what we know about teaching, is we know our teachers are better today than they've ever been. We know that when you measure student growth, not just one test score, but you take, where a student started at the school in September, and where they end in May, we see that our teachers are getting high levels of growth from those kids, which tell us that, that when you look at what potentially can a child learn, that the vast majority of our students are meeting those targets for them. And that includes our special education students. So we know our teachers are doing a good job. We know they have big holes to fill, that when our kids come to us, they come with lots of gaps. But they're doing a good job of that. And we also know that if you look at a student who comes to Ponca City as a kindergartner, stays throughout with us through grade 12, if they come to school, that's a big deal, you've got to come to school. But if they come to school, you know, they'll have the, when they finish at 12th grade, if they don't have a disability of some kind, and obviously disabilities play a role, some disabilities we can modify and overcome, but there are some disabilities that it just is pretty tough to do, that if they'll do that, that when they finish with us, they're ready to go, to do whatever it is they want to do in life. If it's go to college, they're ready to go to college. If it's go to work, they're ready to go to work. And, you know, so we know that. Now, we also know that if kids don't come to school, then we're not, those kids aren't going to do as well. Well, you know, as, 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 part of me want, part of me believes that, you know, gee, how do you hold us accountable for the kid that doesn't come to school? You know, obviously, we need to look at our environments, or something we're doing that makes that young person not want to come. But if they're just not coming, because either they don't value what we're doing, or because their parents are moving all the time, and so there's, you know, they're in this district one year, they're in this district the next year, they're in this school one week, they're in this school a month later. they're in this district the next year, they're in this school one week, they're in this school a month later. Well, I know we wanna fix that, and we all believe in that kid, but are we gonna, are we gonna fire a teacher because of the performance of that particular student? And those are the kinda questions we've gotta ask ourselves as a society. Because one thing I know is this, that for the most part, our parents in this community believe in their teachers. Uh, they respect the job they do, and the vast majority of the kids in this district love their teacher. Now, obviously, when you get to high school, they don't, you know, I mean, even as a parent, you don't know, half the time, your kids don't like you anymore, you know, because they're high school kids. And, uh, but, uh, but that's what we know. And, uh, and so, and that's where I think, you know, back to your question, the state of Oklahoma has got to look at this issue. Because right now, if I'm an Oklahoma teacher, or if I'm, if I'm an Oklahoma student going to college, I can go to any other state, and I can make more money. Uh, my daughter-in-law in northwest Arkansas makes about $10,000 a year more than any place she would working in Oklahoma. And she's a Oklahoma State grad. And so we trained her. You know, we gave her, we provided her education, we subsidized her tuition with tax dollars. And now she's out of state to someplace making more money. And some of that's, my son-in-law works for a company in, in Rogers. Uh, he works for Land of Lakes. But, you know, when we, when, when I had that conversation that all parents have with their children who live out of state, which is, have you thought about coming to work for an Oklahoma company? You know, the first thing my daughter-in-law says is, I'd have to take a $10,000 a year pay cut. Well, you know.
Not many people are gonna do that.
Not many people are gonna do that. And so, so now, you know, and, and how long can we expect our young people to graduate from college here and to re, and, and to say, well, I wanna, I wanna live in Oklahoma? And yeah, I can go to Arkansas and make, I mean, I can go to Arkansas and make more money. You know, I can go to Texas and make more money, I can go to Kansas and make more money. How long do we expect them to do that just because they want to be close to mom and dad? You know, I mean, I, I don't know. You can, you can, you could teach in Wichita and be in Ponca City there in 15 minutes if you're a Ponca City kid. So how, how long do we expect, uh, young people to do that? And then the question is, which of our young people are staying? You know, is it, is it, are, are the other states siphoning off? Are they getting the students who can't get jobs in Oklahoma? Or are they getting the best and brightest we have to their state? And then we're left with, with talented teachers, good kids. But are they the best our universities are producing? And so, and that's a money issue. It's a, it's flat money, it's, it's about putting more money into our schools, it's about, you know, and, and I know I've been on this for a couple of years, but we're, we took the third-largest cut in the country. The third-largest cut in the United States of America in education budget during the recession. Over 20%. Our state appropriation this year was the highest it's ever been. It's higher than it was before the recession. But it, but our, the amount of money that we have in the common schools in this state is still $200 million less than what it was in, uh, in '08, '09. And, and so we're not even back to even yet. I mean, if we had, if we, if we had that $200 million, we'd still be having this same conversation. We would still be facing teacher shortages, we still wouldn't keep up pay-wise. We're, we are following further and further behind our neighboring states. Forget about the rest, forget about the rest of the country. Forget about what they're, what they do in New York, or California, or Michigan, or Illinois, or just in our region, Texas, Kansas, Missouri, Colorado, New Mexico, and Texas. We are last in that region in what we spend in our schools and in what we pay our teachers. We're last. And, uh, and we're, and we're not even, it's not like we're $50 from the bottom. You know, I think the difference, I think we're, I don't remember now, I'd have to, I don't wanna give a false number, but we're close to $1,000 less than the next lowest state. So per student, per what we spend per kid. Every time that comes up, one of the things, one of the questions always is, well, what about administrators? I saw, there was an interesting study in the, uh, in oklahomapolICY.org. And, uh, if you, if you really wanna know some nonpartisan, and I know nonpartisan sometimes depends upon how you're viewing the thing, but oklahomapolICY.org, and this organization out of Tulsa does great research on, on policy decisions in Oklahoma. And they issued a report this summer, which didn't get a whole lot of attention. But they actually looked at that question. You know, uh, we have a lot of school districts, and because we have a lot of school districts, our administrative pay su, is, is higher than the national average. But they did a study, and, and they said, if we eliminated every superintendent in Oklahoma and went to one like, uh, like, uh, they have in Hawaii, it would not make, we would not move up a slot. We would not move above anybody in what we spend per kid. We'd be in the exact same spot we are. And so, uh, you know, while it's easy, politicians like to blame administrators and say administrator's salary's too high. Uh, the bottom line is, is we're not paying, we're not, we're not committing the resources to public education that other states in the region are. They're just, we're just not. And some of it may be because we don't, I mean, I, I've not looked at the revenue of those states. I don't know how much money they bring in. I'm sure they bring in more revenue than we do. I know they haven't cut taxes, uh, four times in the last 10 years. And, uh, and so there's a price to pay for those things. There, when we do, when we make those decisions as a state, while it sounds good, I mean, I mean, who wouldn't wanna vote for somebody that promises to cut your taxes? But to think that you're gonna cut taxes and there's not a cost to that. Well, there is a cost. Something, something's not gonna have the revenue it had before. And, uh, and right now, I mean, we're not the only one. I mean, every state agency could make this same argument. And so we, you know, what, what I guess what frustrates me is we can't seem to have an honest education in the state about this. I mean, if, if this is, if this is really what citizens of this state want, if they really, if that's what, if that's what they want, then, okay, fine, we'll, we can deal with that. We can have 35 students in an elementary classroom. We can have 40 students in high school. We can do that. You know, we, we, I mean, we'll, we'll make it work. We have to. We have a law that says we can't spend money we don't have. So with the budget we have, we can, we can make that work. But my guess is that that's not what the people want. You know, what we all want is, is, the saying is, we wanna have our cake and eat it too. We, we don't, we wanna have low taxes, but we wanna have great schools. We wanna have low taxes, we wanna have high-quality teachers. We wanna have low taxes, we wanna have great universities. Well, you know, I don't know of a, I don't know of any state that's done that. I mean, you look at the rankings of those kinds of things, and the states that have the most revenue have the best universities, have the best public schools. So there's a relation, I don't know what the relationship is. I mean, it's not just money. I mean, money can't do everything, but it gets closer.
How many years for you now at Ponca City?
This, this starts my ninth year.
Ninth year, wow, that's hard to believe. Uh, good luck to you. We'll talk with Dr. Pennington next month on our next board wrap-up.